... which it stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Role call. Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Mr. Carson? Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Student representative Kaylee Whitlash and Dylan Opulinski will not be present this evening.
For the record, Mr. Carson also indicated he would not be present tonight.
Citizens comments?
I hold in my hand a document titled 2019-20 Southmoreland School District Preliminary Budget, dated last week, the 14th of February. At first glance, it's an absolutely beautiful document with an income of $32,398,094 and expenses of $32,398,92. However, upon a closer look, it turns into an absolute horror. Built into this balanced budget is a 16 mil property tax increase. 16 mils for Westmoreland County with an identical amount for Fayette. It was already included in this preliminary budget. If it were to pass this way, it would be a tax increase of 17 percent. Inflation is now 3 percent. I can already hear all the comments from the board, "Well, we're going to cut, we're going to cut, we're going to cut." If you were so convinced that you were going to cut, why did you have to put 16 mils in there? The answer is, just in case you don't get to cut, you already have it in there. The thing that I am amazed at is how the system that is used for how this budget is prepared. First, you prepare the budget basically in the wrong way, and then you tell the taxpayer, "Well, we're going to work to make it right." Why wouldn't you do preliminary research ahead of time, way ahead of time, and present an accurate budget first, and be honest with all shareholders, including affected employees who may be outsourced? When the board motion was read publicly, it said, "The millage rate for Westmoreland County will be 93.88." It did not say that the millage rate will be increased from 77.78 to 93.88, resulting in a 16 mil increase. There are two kinds of statements, those of commission and those of omission. Now, when you meet to cut this millage increase, exactly what is your goal? Are you going to cut those 16 mils to 15, 13, 12, 10, 9, 8, 4, 0? You must have a specific goal in mind, and I'm sure that you have already arranged for specific meetings by which you will publicly disclose your actions. Let's look at the issue of voter referendum. Maybe you can't get that mil increase down far enough unless you go to a public vote on the ballot to increase property taxes. You think it'll fail? Analyze it more carefully. What is the difference if the voters elect school board members who they already know are going to raise their taxes, or if the people vote to raise their own taxes themselves? What's the difference? Under the present voting patterns, it doesn't matter. Either way, you get a tax increase. The famous definition of insanity is you keep doing the same thing over and over, expecting different results. It doesn't work that way. Like your newest board member said, "When I too left the board, there was an $8 to $9 million fund balance." I certainly didn't wipe it out. I want to know who did. Seven years ago, I was booed and jeered by the teachers' union when I told everyone that if you did not look ahead and consolidate schools to an elementary, junior, senior high school pattern, you will face bankruptcy. I showed that seven years ago. Seven years ago, the business manager that was hired before the present one also developed a document showing exactly what was going to happen if this board continued to spend money and do what they were doing. I'm not the only one who warned these people. You are now down to a minimum fund balance, and it is shocking that this happened in such a short period of time. The elementary, junior, senior high configuration is the most common one in the state of Pennsylvania for districts our size. It preserves jobs and stabilizes expenses. I want to know who is going to take responsibility for what the school boards have done to our district, driving it into potential bankruptcy and a financial crisis. Right now, I respectfully ask those of you who accept responsibility for what you have done to please stand up.
Your time's up.
Line U on page one reads, "There is a deficit of $1,734,615. If you are forced to use the fund balance, you will be totally bankrupt."
Your time is up.
I am waiting for the people to stand up and accept responsibility for what you have done to this district.
Minutes? January Board meeting minutes?
The board is asked to consider the approval of the January 10th, January 17th, and January 24th, 2019 school board minute meetings. Many meeting minutes.
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Business and Finance, January 2019 Fund Accounting Check Summary?
The board is asked to consider the approval of the January 2019 Fund Accounting Check Summary.
Motion?
Let me get my.
Mr. Polakowski, second?
John.
Mrs. Smith? Role call, please.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, on the check summary. There's three payrolls that show up under the check summary, okay? Fourth and the 18th, then February 1st. My question is, did the February 1st payroll hit the board summary report? Do you know? I mean, if it's February 1st, will it hit the February statement?
Transfer was made, and it hit this check summary for January. Now, it's an electronic transfer. We don't actually process a check. So, yeah, payroll was on the first, but we have to get the money in.
So, that's just the money coming in. It did not hit the summary report, right? So, in other words, when we get to the board summary report, there's not three pays in January?
No.
Showing up. Okay. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. Motion? Mr. Polakowski and Mrs. Smith. Oh, okay. Role call. Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent. Revised December 2018 Treasurers Report?
The board is asked to consider the approval of the Revised December 2018 Treasurer Report.
Motion?
Some move.
Mr. Fry, second? Mrs. Smith? Questions?
Bill. There are three pay dates in March, just to let you know.
There are. Okay. Well, okay, when we get to...
March 1st, March 15th, and March 29th.
Okay. Are there a total of 26 this year?
I believe this is a 26 pay year. Some years you have a 27 pay.
Every fourth to fifth.
Yeah, some. Okay. I'd rather adopt a pay, two pays a month on the 15th and 30th as the last working day. But when I brought that up during my first year, that seemed to cause some angst with Jack and the employee group, so I just dropped it. I'm sorry. Do your vote.
Role call. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent. Board Report, Student Report?
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry. Sorry. January 2019 Board Summary Report?
The board is asked to consider the approval of the January 2019 Board Summary Report.
Motion?
Mr. Rhodes, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski, questions?
Question. Jim, this board summary report, it seems very meager to me. And what...
Is it what?
Meager. What I find lacking, it doesn't give me the detail of what was spent in a month, okay? We're looking at January. It doesn't tell me how much we spent in each account for that month, or any month. It just gives me a cumulative.
As it says, it's a summary report. There are more detailed reports in this system. If you want to stop by the opposite, we'll run a bunch of samples. If you like one, bring it to the meeting and maybe adopt it. But, yeah, it does show that during the month of January... Find that page. Yeah, you're right. It's cumulative. I understand that.
Is it possible to have this same report with the monthly expenditures?
I'll have to look at that. I'm pretty sure there's a program in there that does, one of the canned reports that does exactly that.
Okay. Can you look at that for me?
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks.
Wait. Is it done? Role call. Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
I had asked Jack that during my first couple of months here. This was the summary report that was being used. And I showed him, I said, "There's many different types of reports in there." I said, "Do you want to look at another one?" He said, "No, that's until we're instructed to change. We'll stick with the same format."
And I got to say that I never looked at Jack for Beistel money, so...
Oh, well, he was my boss, just like Mr. Mazzia is. So, I try to follow the rules and do what my supervisor would like me to do, or directs me to do.
Okay. Board Reports, Student Report?
Congratulations to the members, Scotty Scholar, Travis Simple, and congratulations also to the members, Spirit of Southmoreland student Dylan Opulinski. And congratulations to December, Scotty Scholar, Alyssa Kaiser, and December, Spirit of Southmoreland student, Tessa Hamporsky. And finally, congratulations to January, Scotty Scholar, Alyssa Klat, and Spirit of Southmoreland student, Kayliana Raker. L. Kenny and Dylan Opulinski won their round in Great Debate at Penn Trafford High School on January 16th. On February 5th, the Quiz Bowl team competed at Mount Pleasant High School. varsity came in fourth place, and junior varsity came in second. The Voice in Dance Competition at Valley High School, Michaela Harvey took second place in the singing and dancing competition. Paige Ladewitz took first in the dancing competition, and Emily White took first in the singing competition. In addition to that, I also have four students participated in the PMEA District Band Festival. Dylan Opulinski, Isla Greenawalt, Quay Akins, and Kaylee Whitlash. Three of those students advanced to the Region Band Festival. Isla Greenawalt, Quay Akins, and Dylan Opulinski.
Superintendent's Report?
Yes. I want to thank Jim Ornell for assisting me in developing our second draft of the district's preliminary general fund budget. Estimated expenditures are now at $31,680,766, down from $32,398,092, for a net difference of $717,326. This difference is a direct result of the budget adjustments from removing eight teachers with the current year-rip incentive and entering two replacement teachers at master level two, step level, assuming family benefits. The replacement positions are high school guidance and speech teacher. I wanted the difference to reflect the overall impact the year-rip incentive has on reducing the structural expenses of the district. Additional reductions will be coming in the very near future. It is recommended the board consider the reestablishment of board committees that will meet to discuss and make recommendations concerning important events that are occurring in the district. Political committees could include finance, labor, building and ground, school safety, athletic, et cetera. Southmoreland School District is undergoing the onsite portion of the administrative review of Southmoreland School District's food service program. The review was to occur on Wednesday, February 13th, but was canceled due to inclement weather. The rescheduled date was yesterday, which was also canceled due to inclement weather. The date is now up for further review, so we have to wait for the next additional date. Southmoreland School District will be also undergoing the administrative review for the district's special education plan on Wednesday, April 17th, 2019. Additional information will follow. In looking into the renewal application for insurance coverage of the Ruffstel Building, it was found the coverage limit is $500,000, but the district will be charged the premium rate for full coverage if the building has no tenants and sits vacant. There are other limitations to the coverage if the building is vacant. This is a good argument for maintaining tenants in the building until the sale of the building. In planning for the future, major renovations will be needed to upgrade the facilities at the high school tennis, track, baseball, and softball complexes, and I mention that just for public knowledge. That is in conclusion on my report.
Thank you. Business Managers Report?
I have no extra reports tonight. Thank you.
Solicitors Report?
I have no extra report. I did provide your auditor, Mr. Mark Turnley, with my opinion letter for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, and that is being made available to you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, you have not had your first meeting at DIU, correct?
Right.
Okay. CWCTC Report?
I've never been to CWCTC.
PSVA Liaison Report?
Thank you all for your time. I haven't used it. I'm going to report on a couple of bills that are currently being looked at in Harrisburg. First of all, it's a Senate Bill 34. It was sponsored by State Senator Judy Schwank of Berks County, and that would require a family to pay out-of-pocket tuition to attend a cyber charter school if their home district offers a cyber-based program equal in scope and content. Depending on its interpretations and implementations, this measure could halt the flow of millions of taxpayer dollars from traditional school districts to cyber charters. Two weeks ago, State Representative Kirk Sonny from Erie announced plans to introduce House Bill 526. That is essentially the same as Senate Bill 34. Some school districts, and Southmoreland School District is one of them, offer full-time cyber educational programs of their own. When a student particularly in such a program, and also participates in such a program, the school district is not forced to pay a cyber school. The bill would encourage school districts to offer full-time cyber education programs to their students, and will encourage students to enroll in these programs, and ultimately will result in school districts saving money. Now, I did call the senator and the representative's office today. I'm still waiting for the senator's reply with getting back to me with some information, but I did get some information back from the state rep. They emailed me some information that I included here in the report. Currently, just as a matter of some information, currently Southmoreland School District is spending $1.2 million on cyber school. We do offer our own cyber school called SOLO, which is Southmoreland Online Learning Academy. It is offered to the ninth and 12th grade. It is set up with teaching support through the Westmoreland IU. I did have a good conversation this afternoon with Dan Clara about SOLO. We discussed the fact that we need to have a better method of identifying students that may be thinking of going to an outside cyber school, and also how to better promote our current program, the SOLO. Mr. Clara suggested maybe reaching out to students in the summer with a letter explaining what we can do that might persuade them from going to an outside cyber school, and then maybe follow up with some kind of a session, maybe a question, an answers questions session, open to the public. We want to reach out to these students before they make up their minds on something outside our district. This whole cyber charter school issue has sort of been a thorn in my side for years. Finally, finally, there could be legislation that will give school districts some financial relief, and also, more importantly, be better educationally for our students. I see that there might be some light at the end of the tunnel, and we, as Southmoreland School District, cannot let that light go out. So, I think it's important that we continue to monitor these bills. I plan on doing that. Also, plan on, if need be, contacting other districts, contacting our local representatives and senators, and find out, you know, what their opinion on this is, if they can do something to help our districts, and their school districts in their district. So, I just thought that was very important to bring out and make sure everybody knows about this, and it's something that I plan on pursuing. So, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And there's also an article that I plan on printing and giving out to everybody at the next meeting, because I thought it was very, very helpful, and it gives you a lot more information than what I gave you here tonight. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
For informational benefit, several points to Mrs. Rhodes. First of all, Mrs. Sutton, the assistant principal at the high school, has been assigned duties to oversee the SOLO Academy, so she is currently now reviewing those students that are enrolled in there. And an additional part of her responsibility is that she is to reach out to those students that are not enrolled in our SOLO Academy via the other cyber charter schools, and we're looking to try to bring some of those, have conversations, and bring some of those individuals back into either our brick and mortar or into our SOLO Academy. So, we are currently working on trying to lessen that impact.
Anything you can do is always good. Anti-bullying.
I don't really have anything to report on that. Basically, I think I gave that information last month. So, we haven't met or anything, but I think it might be, as soon as the weather cooperates somewhat, try to have another meeting and, you know. I know it would probably be, every time, we'd probably try to arrange a meeting in the evening. We'd probably have one of these evenings where everybody would look out and say, "Oh, man." So, kind of wait until the weather clears up a little bit, maybe in March, we can do that. So, I don't have anything else on that.
Okay. Now, Mr. Carson's not here for school safety, so old business Realtor extension letter for the Ruffstel Building?
Having received the consent of the Realtors submitting responses to the request for proposals for Ruffstel School, the deadline to decide is extended to on or before April 25th, 2019. That's a resolution for extending the deadline for selecting Realtors for Ruffstel.
Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second?
Second.
Mr. Fry? Discussion? Role call? Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent. New Business Wellness Policy?
The board is asked to consider the posting of the wellness policy, Policy 246, for 30 days.
Motion?
Some move.
Mr. Beistel, second? Mrs. Smith? Discussion? Role call? Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent. Step Up Southmoreland School District Resolution?
Whereas in the summer of 2018, a small group of regional educators and county behavioral health personnel met at the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit to discuss potential funding under the Students, Teachers, and Officers Preventing, which is STOP, School Violence Act Program, offered by the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the group decided to establish a mental wellness partnership to improve school safety and security, independent of federal funding and associated requirements. And whereas Step Up, Students, Therapists, Educators, and Parents United in Prevention, Westmoreland officially kicked off on December 6th, 2018. And whereas Step Up Westmoreland is a collaborative effort with the Westmoreland County Office of Behavioral Health Development Services, Westmoreland County Intermediate Unit, and Westmoreland County School Districts, the comprehensive new program seeks to build confidence, resilience, and optimism among students while also removing barriers to critically needed mental health intervention services and space. And whereas Step Up Westmoreland's goal is to support the academic, social, and emotional success of all students by creating caring, safe, and positive educational environments, and will accomplish this by creating a countywide best practice network of mental health services throughout the collaboration of schools, families, communities, and behavioral health stakeholders. The program is based on research about school safety and security, including equal access to behavioral and mental health services. And now, it is hereby resolved that the Board of Education, or the Board of Directors of the Southmoreland School District, celebrate the creation of Step Up Westmoreland, continue to support the mental health network development, and promote the mental health network to all district stakeholders and community. The board is asked to publicly approve this resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Discussion? Role call? Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent. Overnight Trip for Band Students Who Qualify for Region Band?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of three of our band students, which have advanced from district band to regional band. Students Shelby Bryant, Quay Akins, and Dylan Opulinski have advanced to competitive section of the ensemble, which will take place at Plumborough High School Wednesday, February 21st, 2019, to Friday, February 23rd, 2019, which will culminate in a concert.
Who's to say? Today's the 21st. So, the three students, Isla Greenawalt, Quay Akins, and Dylan Opulinski, it will be at Sharon High School. And the dates are March 7th, 8th, and 9th, around that time.
Well, we really got that one wrong, didn't we?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's what she said, and I wondered why I had an 8, 18, so I made it 19. So, the dates are when again?
Let me double-check. March 7th, 8th, and 9th, Thursday through Saturday.
And where is it?
Sharon?
Sharon. Yeah, Sharon High School. Or I'm sorry, Newcastle High School.
Newcastle?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we need to change anything in the motion, or is it good, should we reread it?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll reach out to Mrs. Gordon Reed and send that. Do we need to amend, like, we're amending the resolution, is that sufficient, Mr. Plonik?
Yeah, the consent of the people who made and seconded the motion, and it's amended for those dates. That would be...
She didn't have to refuse.
Refresher.
Who made the motions?
We don't have one yet.
We didn't get a motion yet?
No motions.
Okay.
Is there a cost to it?
Is there a cost?
I think the cost usually comes straight out of the base budget. So there is a cost to it, but most of it's already allocated.
Okay, Mr. Polakowski makes the motion, second?
Second.
Mrs. Rhodes? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Resolution Adequate Investing in Public Schools and Students.
Please bear with me once more. Whereas Pennsylvania's more than 1.7 million public school students deserves the highest quality education, and the state's public schools work best when they have the resources to give all students the opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas Pennsylvania ranks 46th amongst the 50 states in the amount of state subsidies allocated to support elementary and secondary education, among the lowest in the nation, with state's share of funding public education at 38%. And Pennsylvania has the widest funding gap between wealthy and poor school districts of any state in the country. And whereas the state has failed to keep pace with the rising cost of mandated special education for students with disabilities, which has increased by $1.6 billion over the last decade, even as the state's share of the cost has fallen from 36% to 25%. And whereas the state has failed to keep pace with the cost of providing career and technical education pathways to students, allowing its share of CTE funding to fall to 8%, leaving school districts with 90% share of the CTE budget. And whereas inadequate state funding places additional burdens on local taxpayers to pick up a greater share of public schools' costs to ensure that our students' education is not jeopardized. And whereas the state must make greater substantiable investments in public schools to lift all students and prepare them for today's competitive workplace. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Southmoreland School District urges the General Assembly to take legislative action for public education by increasing basic education funding through the state's Fair Funding Formula, ensuring sufficient resources for special education and career and technical education, and generating the necessary revenues through sustainable recurring funding sources. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be submitted to the elected senators and representatives of the Southmoreland School District in the General Assembly and to the Governor of Pennsylvania.
Can we have a motion? Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mrs. Smith? I got Mrs. Smith. Roll call?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
New Story Tuition Agreement 2018-2019 School Year.
The Board is asked to consider the approval of a tuition agreement with New Story for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year.
Mrs. Smith, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Polakowski. Discussion?
Is this in regards to special education?
This is a student that needs to be placed in a special environment.
This is a program that's not offered anywhere else?
Not, not in our, in our district. We've placed that individual in another program, and they were not successful.
And where is, where is this new story located?
I believe it, yes.
Monroeville, yeah.
Park?
Monroeville.
Okay, and we transport, right?
Yes, sir. $310 per day.
And whose recommendation are we doing this?
Our learning support and administrative staff.
And we can't do it in us?
Now, let it also be noted that this individual has the ability to be exited out of that program sooner than the end of the year, depending on successful completion of the requirements.
Then what program would that child?
Would bring him back into our system.
What's the anticipated length of that program?
I would like to say one day, but given the circumstances, it could be for the remainder of the school year.
Five days a week?
Does this continue through the summer? Do we have a motion, or?
Yeah.
We have a motion. Roll call?
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
E-Rate Letter of Agency?
The Board is asked to consider the approval of E-Rate Letter of Agency for funding year 2019-2020.
Make the motion.
Second? Mrs. Smith?
What is this? This E-Rate?
I do believe it is ours.
It's reimbursed for technology?
Yes.
It's been in vogue for 15 years. You get a certain percentage reimbursed on your technology. It comes to a substantial amount of money. Usually like Verizon reimburses.
I'm not sure I have the total amount that it will save us, but it is substantial.
It's substantial.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Armstrong E-Rate Contract Lease for Dark Fiber?
The Board will be asked to consider the approval to renew a three-year contract with Armstrong Business Solutions to provide dark fiber between the elementary and the high school and the primary center in the high school at a cost of $1,250 a month. That is our connectivity.
Mrs. Smith, second? Mrs. Rhodes? Roll call?
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Awarding of Bids Diesel Fuel?
The Board is asked to consider the approval of awarding the bid for diesel fuel for the 2019-2020 school year. Per the school district's quantity request, the Godman Energy, whom the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for Fuel has identified as the lowest responsible bidder, meeting or equalling specifications for diesel fuel at a fixed rate of $2.0426 per gallon.
Motion? Mr. Frye, second? Mr. Beistel? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Awarding of Bids Gasoline?
The Board is asked to consider the approval to award bids for gasoline for the 2019-2020 school year. Per the school district's quantity request, petroleum traders, whom the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for Fuel has identified as the lowest responsible bidder, meeting or equalling specifications for gasoline, 87 octane, at a fixed rate of $1.7286 cents per gallon. Oh, I'm sorry, $1.7286 dollars per gallon.
Mrs. Smith, second? Mr. Beistel? Discussion?
Hey, Jim. Are these prices lower than last year, do you know? Do you recall?
Yes, they are.
Substantially?
Substantially, no.
Okay. Is it typically the same bidders?
I'm sorry, say again.
Is it typically the same bidders involved when I was here?
Yes, very, very typically, yes.
Roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Personnel Day-to-Day Substitute?
The Board is asked to consider the approval of Douglas Aller as a day-to-day custodial substitute on an as-need basis for the 2018-2019 school year. Clearances are up to date.
Mr. Frye, second by Mr. Beistel? Roll call?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Excuse me. The Board of School Directors is asked to accept the retirement notifications of the following members of the teaching staff with regrets and acknowledges and accepts their eligibility for the Early Retirement Incentive Plan for Teachers 2019. These teachers are Sheila Boots, Johann, Donna Schrum, Kathy Thompson, Denise Saunders, Mike Saunders, Chuck Britton, and Darcy Palun.
Motion? Mr. Beistel, second?
Second.
Mr. Porter? Roll call?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Posting of High School Guidance and Speech Teacher?
The Board is asked to consider authorizing the administration to post and advertise for a guidance counselor position and a speech teacher position for 2019-2020 school year.
Motion? Mr. Beistel, second?
Sir.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Is this something we have to do?
Yes.
As opposed to?
These are the two that we were going to...
Right, I understand that. Is there something that requires us to do this?
Our, we would be well above our allowable case loads for the speech, and I would strongly encourage with all the activity that is, with the Safe to Say and whatever, all the other responsibilities that high school guidance counselors do, I would strongly encourage us to consider hiring, rehiring that second person.
How many guidance counselors do we have now?
Two at the high school, one at the middle school, one at the elementary, and half at the primary center.
Can we combine one of those up for the elementary and middle school?
There's an awful lot of requirements being placed on us with career goals, and...
Well, when you're talking elementary and middle, you're not, or primary.
It's, it's... The guidance counselors are becoming a lot more in call for services. I can only tell you that a lot of the problems that are occurring with mental health issues with our students, our guidance counselors readily step in and are assisting those students, and they're alleviating a lot of the problems that are occurring in schools. I would strongly, strongly encourage us to maintain our current level of guidance counselors. With the requirements that are coming down with the state and the mandates for school safety, I think we would be remiss, and I just want to go on record, I think we would be remiss in not considering rehiring the necessary guidance counselors. What happens if, at the high school level, if a student that is applying for financial scholarships does not receive those because of a potential error, then we're, I think we're just really compromising our ability to be able to function properly and provide our students the necessary services.
Well, I agree with you on the higher level, but I just don't see the use for it at the primary and the lower grades. I mean, I may sadly be mistaken, but...
There is an increasing number of student problems at the lower levels, Mr. Al.
There's no doubt, and that has to do with discipline, and that's a totally different issue. Okay.
I'm just, I really want to go on record in saying that I think we would be placing ourselves in the district at a disadvantage if we did not have the current number of guidance counselors in our schools. I just know what their current responsibilities are.
Any other discussion?
So are these the only two positions that are being replaced, and are the other staff members retiring?
Yes.
Is the, can you inform me on like the reasoning behind only filling two positions as opposed to the other staff members?
We are going to repurpose and restaff our district.
Okay, because I mean, especially as a student, I mean, there's some concerns that I know some students have in that, I mean, if you look at the high school level, you have three teachers retiring from the high school, and the third floor is not even being used, and that's going to make even more classrooms on the, on the main levels not even, you know, not being utilized. And then like, I know that the three teachers that are retiring from the high school, some of them have like full classes, and I don't know how we're expecting to fill, make other teachers compensate for like the lack of another teacher when the teacher that's retiring already had full classes.
Dylan, I could assure you one thing, that in working with the administrative team, we are taking a look at all current staffing needs and student requirements, and we believe that we can repurpose and resize this district a little more efficiently.
And you've been working with SCA, is that right?
Yes, yes, I have.
So everyone's in agreement?
We, I believe currently right now that we have a very good working relationship with the SCA, and we both have the same purpose of trying to right-size this district and do what is best for our students, keeping the education in mind.
So when you say right-size, are you referring financially?
Well, I'm also talking about the possibility of the staffing needs. And I do want to go on record that we are both... And I do want to go on record that we are, both administration and the SCA are keeping the highest level of educational services in mind throughout this entire process, and we are striving not to compromise that service that we're providing to our students.
I'm proud of this young man bringing up a very important question.
Yeah, I commend Dylan for doing that. He is the one that is going to be directly influencing the most, and I wish more, more students would speak up for what is going on in our schools.
Because I know, the students know that the teachers are retiring, and they, and like the younger students are concerned about how they're going to, you know, fill that, those classes, so I'm glad that, you know, you have a response for that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call?
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Very reluctantly, but with Mr. Mash's push, I have faith in him.
I'll try not to lead you stray, Mr. Al.
I'm sure you will.
Said he has.
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Retirement of LS classroom assistant.
The board is asked to consider the approval of the retirement with regrets of Shirley Stick, learning support classroom assistant at the conclusion of the 2018-2019 school year.
Have a motion? Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Mr. Porter? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Co-coach, middle school track.
The board will be asked to approve Chris Hickson as co-coach for middle school track at a supplemental salary of $2,510 for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion? Mr. Beistall, second by Mrs. Smith? Roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Have we had this position before?
We've had two coaches in that position. Currently, right now, we had an initial enrollment for students in middle school interested in participating in track, and we have seventy-five kids that are interested in the program. If we don't get somebody to assist that track coach, we are going to end up having to eliminate that program.
Well, I think we should be asking for volunteers from both the administrat-- or from the staff as well as the outside, like we do other subjects or other sports.
We are currently asking everybody that would want to volunteer to volunteer.
You know, I would like to see if seventy-five people actually show up, and we do have a cut policy. I'm done.
Well, the problem with track, there's so many different...
Well, yeah, but we keep cutting supplementals, and then we come back with another supplemental for something else, so it really doesn't benefit us on cutting these supplementals. I mean, we've done away with some of the paid coaches, and, you know, we've gotten volunteers, and it's not saving us any money by jumping back in again with another staff or another supplemental.
You'd please, I think something also has to be kept in mind, that a lot of these kids have already paid for their pay-to-play fee, and if they choose to go out for track and they don't have, we don't have the capacity to oversee them properly, are we providing them fair service there?
Well, again, we have a cut policy, I mean...
But what I'm saying on the cut policy is there's so many different aspects to track. There's like...
Well, there's a number of events, I think.
Right, yeah, right.
There's no doubt about it, but I mean, at what point do you draw the line? I mean, is one enough? I mean, you've got, like you said, they're all over the field, you know? What point do you draw the line?
The only point I have is the safety purpose of it, because if you have more than a busload going anywhere, how are you going to contain the others on the second bus? And even though we do have a cut policy, what happens if you just overcome like fifty children, twenty-five quid, or whatever, you still have, you're going to have to use two vehicles to mandate these kids to keep them in line.
You bring up an interesting point. Why, why are we letting a sport have that many? Because again, that's a cost of the bus.
Okay, another thing too with that, it's never in any policy or anything, you can't have so many kids in a sports program. Do tell me where it is.
There is no doubt that there isn't, but you know, you've got to draw the line somewhere, and that's why we have a cut policy. You know, you can't have everybody that wants to do something, because what you're going to wind up with is a mess. You're going to have parents and guardians that are upset that their kids are on a team that has seventy-five kids, and their kid isn't playing.
Traditionally, those kids, because of the number of events, there's not been a problem with parental concerns about the child participating, because we're talking not only track and field, we're talking track and field, and there are a large number of events that are involved in both of those. I would also like to point out that when we send kids to a track event, sometimes there are multiple schools, not just another school that we contest against, similar to what we do in other sports. There could be three or four other schools sending seventy-five kids to that event, so there's potential to have hundreds of students there, and if we're sending our students there, I would find it difficult, my own self, to be able to accurately oversee those students in that scenario.
Well, again, and I'll end this for myself, you know, there are volunteers, and I think that as we talked about this at the last budget discussion, the people in this community who stood out here and filled this room said, "We will volunteer for just about anything, and we will help you out." Well, it's time to step to the plate. We need help with the track team, let them volunteer.
Are there any volunteers for the middle school track team?
Not currently, no.
You know yourself, people say things, but when it comes time to do it, they don't want to do it.
Thank you, Butch. So that we don't have to hear that next time the issue comes up, we'll just say, "You say that, but you're not going to do it."
Right.
You know what? Step up to the plate like you said you were going to do.
Excuse me, I mean, I think that Mr. Mash brought up a good point about how the activity fees are already paid for them. I mean, I'm not sure what the cost is for middle school students, but I mean, that could almost cover the entire salary for the co-coach. And I think that rather than considering about volunteers, like as a student, I feel, yeah, even I think the middle school students feel the same way, that I think they care more about getting to do the activities they want, because they might continue with it throughout high school, and that would feed into the higher extracurricular fee at the high school level, if that's something that you're interested in. But I think that the students care more about doing the activity rather than, you know, having a cut, just in my opinion.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
No.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, one, no, one absent.
Assistant baseball coach candidate.
The board is asked to consider Vaughn Hemfield as the high school assistant baseball coach. He's recommended by Mr. Al Govern for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion? Mrs. Smith, second.
Second.
Mr. Polakowski?
I would highly recommend, and I've had a lot of interaction with Vaughn, he's excellent. Excellent.
Roll call?
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Approval of additional bus drivers?
The board is asked to consider the approval of Michelle Wassel and Paul Wassel, both of Scottsdale, as new school bus drivers for Quest Coach, Quest Transit. All clearances are on file and current.
Motion? Mr. Beistall, second.
Second.
Mrs. Rhodes, roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Volunteer middle school softball coach.
Board is asked to consider the approval of Mike Grabiak as a volunteer middle school softball coach. Clearances are on file and are current.
Motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Mr. Porter? Roll call?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, one, stay and one absent.
We forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that prior to this meeting, there's an executive session for personnel and labor. Thank you.
Citizens' comments?
Amy, I don't know if this is correct on the view of the... I just want to go on record that what Catherine Feig was discussing about sixteen mil tax increase being unrealistic is totally unrealistic, and we talked about that. I did the calculations to take it to index plus one hundred and seventy thousand in exceptions, which I gave you the mileage rates. I understand, I was out of town, and I understand, Mr. Patonic, you shot it down, the reasoning?
Mine began with the school board last fall, the direction of the school board to assist you in coming up with a budget timeline. That was voted on in December to keep open the options for doing a preliminary budget and to keep all of your options open. In order to comply with Act One, the school board would have to make a decision no later than January thirty-one, 2019, as to whether or not to opt out. All of the indications were that it would be advantageous to consider the possibility of pursuing exceptions to Special Session Act One Index, which includes special education and PISers. Mr. Mornell, at previous public meetings, gave calculations in that regard. Consequently, the timeline was being followed to comply with enacting a preliminary budget by February twentieth. In order to continue that process, the school board offered an early retirement incentive plan for teachers. In order to do that, you have to allow for a significant amount of time for them to consider it and to decide whether or not to accept it. In order to manage all those conflicting timelines, the school board again voted to keep open the opportunity for doing the preliminary budget and as part of that process to consider all options. No one on this school board has a crystal ball to guarantee how much money you will receive from the General Assembly. So, I believe that in order to deal with that, you have to leave open the possibility that you will not be receiving what the governor, who didn't announce his budget until into February, what you will actually receive from that. So, it's up to the school board to decide, and you now have in front of you, and the public has in front of it, whenever it makes its requests and demands for its special programs, what the full cost of meeting all those obligations will be without touching fund balance. Your preliminary budget did that.
Even though the option is unrealistic?
I'm, you have the opportunity in the month of March to come in with additional cuts and then make a decision whether or not you want to pursue a referendum, which I assume you probably will not, but I never know that for sure, and I should not prejudge that. So, I have followed your instructions and kept open all options. Now, admittedly, you were not on the school board last fall when this process got started, but that is the approach that was taken. This process began, I believe, in September with some meetings with administrators and continued on through the fall. So, it's up to you to decide whether or not and where to make those cuts and whether or not you want to pursue a referendum. That's not my call, that's your call.
But the bottom line is sixteen mils is not an option.
That is your decision, not my decision.
I don't have a decision. It's not going to happen. There are no, there's no decision here on sixteen mils.
I should not presuppose how you will vote. I followed your instructions.
I can't vote for a sixteen mil because the state will shoot it down.
That's fine, come in next month with all your cuts.
Well, look at the consternation you caused.
I didn't cause anyone consternation. There was truthful and factual and accurate given information given to the public. That is the full cost. That is the full cost of covering everything if you do not make cuts and do not raid the fund balance. Now, you have begun the process because you did the early retirement incentive program. It's up to the school board to continue that process. I don't make those decisions. I merely provided what I was instructed to do, provide you the greatest extent possible of all options.
Even though it's unrealistic. It is unrealistic.
The pressure's on you.
Not me.
Yes, it's on the school.
I knew it at times.
It's on the school board because the school board decides those things. And whenever members come in from the public and they want something, they can see what the full cost of that is.
May I say something?
I was on the board for four years with you, and we never had this problem. You did deal with teacher early retirement incentives, and when you presented the budget, you didn't have to go through this kind of thing.
You never did.
No, we never went through an Act One.
Well, you didn't go through the Act One, but you didn't go through an unrealistic budget.
No. In order to do an Act One budget, you have to do a preliminary budget. Yeah, realistic. And the preliminary budget to qualify for exceeding the exceptions has to include within it the fact that you're exceeding the index. Now, all of that was done. Additionally, there is a possibility, although remote, of doing a referendum. That is not my call, that is the school board's call. I don't make that decision, you make that.
That doesn't answer my question.
What if you do the exception and you just get a couple hundred thousand dollars or something like that? How's, then what do you do?
You have to continue cuts.
You'd have to cut a million dollars out of the budget.
Yes. That's my point. That's my point.
I had a question about the early retirement incentives and I'll make it quick. Uh, you have eight teachers who are getting it. How much is each teacher going to get? Is it $80,000?
Eighty-four. Or six.
I don't have a copy of it with me.
Mr. Marnell, is it $80,000 per teacher they get?
14,000 per year for six years.
Six years. It's $84,000? Okay, so it's going to cost us about $700,000 over the, for those eight teachers to retire, but two of them we're hiring, we're going to hire two teachers back. So I've been keeping track of this and I, roughly, I think we've paid out about $6.5 million in early retirement incentives for teachers. How much have we saved?
Catherine, this school district would be belly up without the early retirement incentives. Period. It'd be belly up.
See, Bill, I'm afraid we're belly up now.
Well, not because of the early retirement incentives. It's what kept us going. In fact, when you were on the board, early retirement incentives shut the fund balance up from 4 million to 8 million.
That's not working now.
The original early retirement incentives were put out there to replace the million dollar loss that was coming from Sony in 1011. And we more and surpassed making up that million bucks. Early retirement incentives, uh, it's a no-brainer. You save money, it saved this district. What's driving this district and all the other districts, uh, into the ground is the pension system. And it's something when you were on the board and when I was here, we never had to deal with. The rate was somewhere, when I left, last year I was here, the rate was at 8.25% of payroll. Now it's moving up to 36%.
Thirty-six, thirty-six.
And what that means in dollars since I've been here, the eight years since I've been here, is about $1.5 million dollar increase that no one on this board can control or has any control over. And what has happened, no one took the responsibility to raise the millage to pay for that cost because there's no way around it. You can't cut your way out of a million and a half bucks. It's not going to happen. And
Bill, that's my concern.
Look around at the other districts. Look at Yawk. They're 12 mils higher than us. Yawk was always maybe three mils higher than us. Mount Pleasant's 13 mils higher than us. They were around four mils higher than us when I was here. Dairy, 10 mils higher than us because they confronted the problem upfront. They saved their fund balance by approaching the problem upfront and meeting that cost. That did not happen here. That's why this district's in trouble.
Bill, they spent the fund balance.
Pardon?
They spent the fund balance. It's gone. The fund balance you left has been spent, it's gone.
Well, yeah, and that's why I come back to try to save it. That's the only reason I'm here.
I wish you good luck, Bill. Good luck with that one.
With inflation, they never did. Well, again, what's driving this district into the ground financially is the pension system, okay? And whether you agree with the defined benefit plan, mathematically, it doesn't work. But I'm a recipient of it, just like you, Catherine. Uh, I'm even a bigger recipient of it. Since you retired, Governor Tom Ridge gave everyone across the board a 25% increase, across the board, okay? And for the last 40 years, governors on both sides of the aisle never addressed it. How they balanced the state budget, what they did, they cut funding the pension system, okay? For 40 years this went on. It went down as low as 1% as Sowers. Now, when the recession hit in 2008 and everyone knew it was broke, this is where we're at.
65 billion in the hole.
Right. And we're making up that 65 billion in a matter of 12 years for the last 40 years.
Well, Bill, don't you think the contracts have something to do with it? Because for every dollar we pay in salary, we pay a dollar 36 for salary and just pension, right?
Well, Sowers always has something to do with it, but, uh, it's the pension system, okay? For me, it's a double-edged sword. Like I said, uh, the defined pension system, that's why corporations got out, they can't afford it, but it's law in this state and, uh, you know, again, it's a double-edged sword. It allowed me to retire, I don't know if it allowed you to retire, but, uh, that's reality. I, I look at things realistically. I, it has to be reality and it's just like our initial budget.
Bill, are there
It's totally unrealistic.
Are there a million dollars in cuts that you could honestly make after the teacher thing? Could you cut a million dollars out of this budget?
Uh, I think we're going to, I think so. And with the preliminary discussions I've had, uh, with Vince, uh, I think we're working our way to that. You know, and then it's hard for me because as a business manager, uh, you're always looking for help from your superintendent to make cuts to help him balance that budget. But then I'm, I feel like this young man here, when you eliminate like six X with teachers, teachers that I, I worked with and I know they're all good and you don't replace them, it's just natural for me to say, okay, you know, let's just do the education. I sat here and held back from saying it, but I'm, I'm so glad this young man brought it up. Vince is addressing it, Vince is the superintendent. If he says he can do it, then I'm, I'm, I'm going to go with the flow, I'm going to go with it.
Are there going to be more personnel involved for cuts?
I'm not at liberty to discuss that yet because we're working through things with the SEA.
Okay, thank you.
Paul Galaro, I live at 2137 Indian Road. I've heard over the last two or three meetings, the fact that had the board voted every year to do a tax increase, we would not be in the position that we're in right now. I, I don't know if the math has been done. I kind of did some of the math and basically what we're saying is we can't actually initiate the large increase that is in the proposal for taxes because it's unrealistic, because it's way too much money for the public to pay. But it's exactly what they would have been paying today if we had increased the taxes every single year that we didn't increase the taxes. So I guess the bottom line is, it's like the old saying about how do you cook a frog? You don't throw them in a pot of boiling water, which is what we'd be doing if we raised the taxes, the astronomical amount we're talking about, we cook them slowly and they still pay the same taxes, only they pay it a little bit each year. So the amount we'd be paying now is exactly what we'd have been paying if we'd have raised it every single year that we never raised taxes. So I'm not advocating that we actually implement that large an increase, but I'm also saying that don't say if we had done something else, we would be in a better position now. We'd be able to pay our taxes now, but we'd be paying them at the same rate that's being proposed in that current budget. Thank you.
Well, I disagree with that statement. I, uh, 16 mils, it's not, uh,
Did you do the math?
Yes.
You did the math, every year that you alleged that we didn't raise taxes, you went through and figured what we have?
You're behind, we're behind nine mils. Nine mils.
I'm asking you
So nine mils on top of 78 would put us at 87, which puts us right where Dairy would be because they confronted the problem upfront, okay? Nine mils would make up a million dollars of that deficit, which would bring you break even with the pension system.
But what I'm asking
I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying we need 16 mils, which goes back to my original thought, 16 mils is never going to happen.
You're exactly right, but you would have been at that, but you would have been at that point.
It can't happen legally.
But you would have been at that point had you raised it every year that you alleged we never raised it.
I said nine mils, not 16. That's what the district's behind, okay? And so you confront the problem upfront. When you confront the problem upfront, you need reoccurring revenue to pay for reoccurring expense. Pension is reoccurring expense.
Totally agree.
You raise the revenue, taxes are reoccurring revenue and you pay for it upfront and you save your fund balance. What this school district's going to end up doing, it'll be nine mils higher with no fund balance. That's my point.
And, but, but you'd still be paying the same taxes, though, that's the point. The tax rate will be the same. If you implement the 9% that you're talking about to get it up there, will be what you would have paid all along. Plus, that's only this year. You wouldn't, you did, not counting, everything, everybody else paid all those other years.
I'm talking about the whole in the budget due to the pension system.
But you're always talking about what would have happened had you actually raised the taxes every year as you could have. That's what you always come back to. We wouldn't have this problem if you'd actually raised taxes every single year to account for that, which means I would have paid taxes every single one of those years and I'd still be at the same point that you're putting us at today.
What point is that?
The point of the nine mils that you want to increase it.
Okay, okay. Tell me how to pay for the pension system.
I'm not asking you
Tell me how to pay for that. No, no, this is where we're at. This is why the damn fund balance is down to nothing. This is why it went from 7.6 million down to 2.8. Now tell me how to pay for it. You paid for it out of fund balance. You paid for all the fund balance, all left this district out of 8 million bucks.
And why did they have that 8 million bucks? Because you raised taxes through the roof, no!
No raised taxes.
You did raise taxes.
Did not raise taxes. You don't know what you're talking about. From 2005 up till I retired, 2012, there was no tax increases.
I did want to let you know that Gail and I talked about some committees. If everybody's okay, this is the way we talked about setting them up. We're going to leave Gail on as anti-bullying after-school, uh, which is sports, which, food and service, food service, Heather. Buildings and grounds, Jason. Safety, we're going to leave with Mr. Carson since she's already heading that up. Transportation, Mr. Alt. And finance and labor, um, myself, Gail and Mr. Porter. If that's okay with everybody? And do we have a mission to adjourn?
Before we do that, I just want to answer Mr. Polakowski's question from earlier. You were asking about the region band trip, if there's a cost. I forgot to mention, uh, like there is a cost. I think like we had two wrestlers advance to, um, like a regional qualifier, I think over the past weekend. And it's something similar to that, like we have a fee to enter, um, like every student that makes it to the regional festival, there's a fee for them. And then there's also the bus cost and the hotel cost. And I think that, uh, and if we move on to all state, there's another couple hundred dollar cost for that as an entry fee. And, um, I just think that's something that the, uh, the board should consider, making sure that the, uh, the students who do advance to, uh, regional and state levels, uh, making sure that that funds are allocated for that. Because I don't know any other district that, uh, students might have to pay out of pocket to go to a state festival or something like that. Because I know like, uh, our personal, like the band budget is, um, you know, lower than it has been and it's, uh, sometimes it's concerning for the students of having to worry to pay out of pocket for that. So I'm just, something the board should, uh, consider.
Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, say aye. Close?